Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today we have our open study session with the General Government Pension Committee Actuarial Valuation as of July 1st, 2020. We have Sandra Roden with Roden Consulting with the proposed 2020-2021 TIPA budget. We have Administrator Roscoe. Sandra?
Yes.
We're having you do the actuarial valuation.
Okay. We're ready for my report then?
Yes, we are.
Very good, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here to meet with you and discuss the actuarial valuation. As you just mentioned, it is based on data as through 2019, but it develops the contribution for the city's fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020. There were quite a few changes in this valuation with respect to benefit provisions. So I think I'd like to direct, does everyone have a copy of the report?
Yes.
Okay. On page two, if you look just in the middle of the page, on page two. There it is. Thank you. Okay. Well, maybe right on the top of the page. Well, this was such, you know, an important part of this actuarial valuation were incorporating the contractual changes that had been included for retirement purposes of this year. And there were some fairly, yeah, some significant changes. One was including the amount of overtime included in final average compensation, which means that when someone goes to retire, that overtime would be included in that salary and hence increase their pension than they otherwise would have had before this contractual change. Service purchases, employees were eligible to purchase service and that is included in this valuation. Those that did purchase service were included. And in fact, there were some that actually were not, it turned out, not able to purchase service or did not want to. So that happened as well. And finally, there were in-service distributions for some people. And what that meant is that some people who could, were eligible to meet the eligible requirements for retirement could retire and yet continue to work. So it speeded up the whole process of retirement, which all of these things tend to increase the liabilities and the contributions that are required. And we'll see that in just a minute, some fairly significant increases. There were no assumption changes included in this valuation. And the actual experience, the actual people information didn't change too much, nor did the asset information. The number of active members stayed about the same. It's 121, just a couple more than last year. The number of retirees were just one less, 157. But noting that the annual pensions are now, you know, $3.4 million, which is certainly a significant amount. And that's why we're so concerned about making sure that the benefits are funded now and into the future. And finally, there are 57, we call them inactive members. These are people who are no longer working for the city, but who will be eligible because they have enough service credit. And once they meet the age requirement, they will be able to retire. And the asset information below that, that didn't change too much either. Forty million of smoothed valuation assets and the market value of assets was about 40 million as well. This is what we like to see. We use a smoothing approach so that it will help alleviate big jumps or decreases in the asset value, which certainly would be a difficult thing for the city to absorb sometimes. So the contributions required or recommended for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 20 are on page three. And there, what we do is compute the contributions and express them as percent of payroll. And then we'll show you a comparison with what the contribution rates have been in past years. The unfunded liability is being amortized now over a period of 22 years. That's a one-year decrease from the prior valuation. The total normal cost for the benefits, which would be the cost for the active employees to pay for the benefit they're accruing this year, is $800,000. And the amortization payment is $788,000. And if you add those two together, you get $1.59 million of recommended contribution. And as a percent of the payroll is 27.55%. And if you look at the next page, you'll see some comparative information on page four. The, on top of the page, we show the comparison of the actuarial liability and the unfunded amount. And look at, comparing July 19 valuation to this current one, the accrued liability jumped up $53.7 million. And that was largely due to the effect of the contractual bargaining provisions. The assets allocated to funding stayed about the same. So hence, your unfunded actuarial accrued liability that needs to be amortized and paid for over time is 13.2 million versus the nine and a half million from the prior year. The contribution, you can see, the contribution, yeah, if you get to the bottom, the contribution rose from 1.2 million last year to 1.59 million this year for fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2020. Going on then, let's see, to the next page, five. There you see, going back to 2001, what the assets have been. And when we say valuation assets, that's the funding value. It's not the market value, it's the funding value. But as we pointed out, that's pretty much the market value this year. The accrued liabilities, you can see the jump there again. And the result is that the funded ratio, that's the assets divided by the liabilities, went down to 75.4%. And the unfunded amount, of course, increased. So ideally, you don't want to keep increasing your, or decreasing the funded ratio. It will happen when you have major changes in benefit provisions and just other experience that is not as favorable as expected. And so you went from 81% down to 75%. You want to get the trajectory going back up. It's certainly the better place to be. You've been in a very well-funded position. And you're not, relative to other retirement systems, 75.4 is not a horrible position relative to other municipalities. But you certainly don't want the trend to go down, you know, to the extent that that's possible to avoid. And you want to get it increasing again, up over, you know, just on the trajectory that it's going up to the 80s and hopefully at some point, the 90s. All right. Then, much of the following pages have to do with benefit provisions and so forth. So I'm going to skip over to the actuarial assumptions. That's over on page 12. So the assumptions are really key in, you know, how large your liabilities are or small. And they are, it's important, but the important thing is that they reflect what's actually happening in the retirement system and what is anticipated to happen. So currently, you're assuming a 7% earnings rate. And that is, you can be glad you're at that position. Many retirement systems have been somewhere as high as 8%. And then many of them, you are now, most of them now, are trying to get down to where you are, the 7%. Probably the majority, five years ago, the majority would have been a seven and a half percent. Now, there's a movement going down. But it's very painful to go down to 7% from seven and a half percent, which most municipalities are finding. So you're, you're in a good position from that standpoint, that you don't have to, you probably don't have to decrease that assumed rate. But you have to, you have to look at what the possibilities are and of course, you make those determinations. But I will mention that the board has, the retirement board has adopted to have a new experience study done. And that new experience study is based on the prior five years of experience and will help us to establish the rates going forward. It doesn't tell us exactly what's going to happen in the future, but we can look at what's happened in the past and then do, and, you know, and study and have discussions about what the expectations are for the future. And of course, with respect to the investment return rate, the investment advisor can provide a significant amount of information in that regard. Salary increases are assumed at four and a quarter, and that's, you know, probably a little bit on the higher side of what other municipalities are assuming. So your assumptions are rather, are pretty mainstream and conservative on the investment, on the economic assumptions. And going on to the next page, the mortality table. The retirement, the mortality table was changed fairly recently to the RP 2014 table. And you'll see the life expectancies there. And we are going to be, when we do the experience study, we're going to be looking at the actual experience of your retirement system. But knowing that actually, you don't have that much experience to develop your own tables. And there is a new table that is out, the PUB 2010 table, which projects longer lifetimes than this particular table for both men and women. And it ranges from about, you know, the younger ages, maybe three years more of lifetime, down to, you know, very small change at age 75 or 80. So basically, from three extra years to, you know, almost like a half a year difference. And you can imagine that will cause an increase in the computed contribution rate as we project, if it's, if the board adopts to use the newer mortality table. But I'm comfortable with the RP 2014 table that's being currently used. It's, you know, relatively, relatively new, but I think the, eventually we'll get to, after the experience study, probably decide within the next few years to increase the longevity rates. The next pages, I won't dwell on too much. Pages 14 are the withdrawal rates. And what that means is, you know, how many people are expected to quit prior to retirement? And the more quits you have, the better it is for the retirement system as far as funding. Because obviously, if they don't make retirement, they don't have to get a pension. But then on page 15, the retirement rates are indicated. And those, you know, potentially will have to be adjusted in light of the current contractual changes, which have allowed people to retire earlier. The end of the report, the following section, five, beginning on page 17, it shows the development of the funding value of assets. I won't go into the, yeah, that's right. Okay. The investment return, the nominal rate of investment return computed this year was six and a half percent. Now, that is not the rate that the investment advisor would, would give you necessarily, but it's for our purposes of internally to compute the rate of return that's, reflects the actuarial methodology. The six and a half percent is, is, you know, a reasonable result, I think. But it is less than the 7%. We'd want it to be, you know, 7% ideally or more. So, but as we mentioned before, the funding value of assets is pretty much equal to the market value. Page 18, it shows the supplemental benefit fund dispersment. And at the board meeting that just occurred, it was determined that there would be $165,000 approved for a supplemental benefit dispersment pursuant to the ordinance. That goes to retirees who have been retired five years and meet all the qualifications. And then finally, the last section is a data section. And page 19 will give you some sense of how the retirement plan has grown in terms of its annual pensions on page 19. You look at, just in 2002, 1.3 million now currently paying out, 3.4 million. The average pensions is staying about the same, about 21,000. And the present value of all those pensions is about $33.8 million. And on average, the value of every retiree's pension is 200, over $200,000. And of course, that can range by individual. Some may be as high as 500, some may be, you know, a 90-year-old would have maybe, you know, $80,000. The, finally, and the last pages are summarize the retirees and the active members by their age. If you look at page 20, just a brief look there, the age and the age distribution of your retirees. I think it's interesting, and I usually point this out, that how many people, what percentage of the people are over 90 years old? And it's 6% here. And it wasn't that long ago when it was viewed as really being a high percent of the people living over 90 was 1% or 2% of the total. And now it's 6%. And that reflects the fact that people are living longer. And page 21, again, is just the vested in actives. Go over to page 22, that's the last page. And the age and the service distribution of the active employees is shown. You've got 22 people less than four years of service. But if you look down at the schedule at the bottom of the page, the, in the shaded box and compare it with prior years, not too much change in the average age and service. The average age is 46 years and the average service is 12 years. Probably on average, a little higher averages than in many other retirement systems, but yours has stayed pretty much constant. So with that, I think I've hit the high points and I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing where the experience study comes out and making recommendations with respect to that. And we appreciate the opportunity to work on this valuation for you. If there are any questions, more than happy to try to respond.
Hey, does anybody have a?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay, hi. We really appreciate the council taking the time out to kind of educate themselves a little bit. And that's what the purpose of today's thing, a presentation was by Sandy, was that to get a little education about what the pension system is and what its funding status. And, you know, we can control, the pension board can control the investments and all of these things, but a big thing that is under the control of the council is the approval of negotiated benefit increases. And when that increases the liability of the system, as it has in this past report reflects, then our funding status goes drastically down. And, you know, if you, if you look back at that page five that was up earlier, you see that our funding status is at 75.4, which is the lowest that it's ever been. And it's just been continuously going down rather than plateauing or starting to creep back up. And so it's, you know, it's very important that the council understand that, you know, that when they have negotiations with the employees and they, there are benefit increases, that you bring the actuary in, have her explain how it would affect the plan so that the council understands the outcome of that. Because sometimes they do a valuation report that says, well, this benefit increase will cost this much. And then there's another one that said, this benefit increase will cost this much. But then when you start stacking them together, the, the cost of them kind of multiplies on each other. And that's not in, as part of that cost. So when you put two or three of them together, which happened this last time, you're rolling in the overtime, you're allowing the purchase of time, and then in-service credit, you had three items that all got added in. And so the, the sum of the total is more than the three individual parts, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
That's right.
So, so we really take, you know, really appreciate the council taking the time. And I just want to say that the member of the boards are here. We have trustee Decker here, trustee Lawler, trustee Macari and myself. Trustee Garcia is on vacation. We have our financial consultant, Mr. Riga, and our, and our attorney, Jack Timoney. And then everybody has met Sandy, who just gave the presentation. And so the board will reconvene their meeting after you guys are done and accept this report. But as you can see, in the kind of long run, it increases the contribution that the city's required to make as the gap between the liability and the funding, amount of money funding comes together.
Thank you. At this time, I have two people who have questions. First on the list is Councilwoman Constance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question, John can probably answer. John Riley, is there anyone in the General Government Pension who is in the drop or that is normally not anything that those employees do not get the drop? Is that a correct statement?
Right. There is no, no employees in a drop, but, but some of the contracts include what they call in-service. So it's basically where they collect their pension and continue to work. And, and so those people are all going to go to the in-service rather than, in the past, some people used to stay and keep working even though they were able to start collecting their pension. And so you kind of lost that, probably because, I mean, if anybody in a reasonable mind would say, well, heck, if I can collect my pension and work, I would do that. And so there is no drop in this particular plan, but it, there is the in-service provision which accelerates the people kind of collecting their benefits.
Those are all people who have been in the, worked for the city for 30 years or more?
Right. With the purchase of time.
Okay. And then second question, the actuary mentioned an increase for those who have been retired and receiving their pension for five years. Was that basically like a COLA increase, a cost of living increase?
Yes, that was a, that was a, that's an in-your ordinance that you guys approved, well, that was a prior city council approved years back. And, and then at one point, there was that we were required to do the maximum distribution. So it was funded with a million dollars. And if we would have kept at that high maximum amount, we wouldn't probably have much money left at all. But now that fund is like at a million two. And the board controls how much is distributed. And actually, this year, we lowered it down a little bit. We've got, like I say, was we taken our foot off the accelerator and have reduced the amount as being distributed, using that supplemental benefit as, because you, the council again made an amendment to that ordinance, giving the board the ability to make how much would be distributed each year.
All right. And then, so when a, when a participant dies, and I'm thinking more about the police and fire pension, which this is not, and we hear about those deaths, but when a, when a participant dies, except for widow's benefit, then the pension fund makes out, basically, correct? Because that person doesn't live on and collect their?
Right, right. So, yeah, I mean, there would be, it may be some actuarial, it depends on what, what there is, when they, we would assume that they were going to pass as to when they actually passed. And then there are, if an individual is married when they retire, then there are some spousal benefits.
And then last question, so the return of like six and a half percent, that's well above what the CPI is.
Right. But our assumed rate of return is 7%. So when we only earned six and a half, we actually have a actuarial kind of, we didn't meet our bogey of 7%. Now, over the long term, we have met the 7%, but in the short term, the market rates fluctuate and sometime, some of the periods, or like for this particular year, was six and a half percent, that's, you know, didn't meet the 7% bogey that we have set up.
So, but, so the pension fund and the investments have done well with the 7%, I mean, above the consumer price index?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is from John R. We need to find where he is at, Georgeanne?
That might be me.
Yeah, that was already.
Oh, that was you. Okay. Then we have Ray Moskow is next.
No questions for me. I didn't raise my hand.
Oh, okay.
I just want to thank her for a great presentation. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you very much.
We have Councilwoman Hicks Clayton have a question?
I did, yes. Thank you, Council Chair. I had noted, you know, through the years, when I first took office in 2012, our, we were funded in the middle 90s, 90 percentile. So as our treasurer, John Riley, indicated, it has steadily declined over the years. We're at 75% now. And the question I have is, the annual contribution, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking at 1.5 million, is that correct? And if so, and pardon me because I don't have the budget in front of me, can you tell me what our annual allocations are looking like to offset this?
Madam Chair, if I may, I answer Council, Councilwoman Clayton's. So we had this report back in May, and so your current budget has these numbers in the budget according, because we, we knew the contribution amount even before the report was done. Because we tried to get that into your budget so that you guys actually approve a budget with the proper funding amount. If that answers your question, Councilwoman.
It does. And as I indicated, I don't have my budget in front of me. And because we have other people on the call today or on the Zoom, I thought maybe somebody might have that information available. That's why I asked the question. Anybody have that for us?
Well, it is in the budget.
I know. I'm asking for the amount, though. Is our comptroller or anybody that can share that? Again, because we have public with us, so they don't have the budget in front of them. And I don't have it in front of me either. I'd like to know what the annual amount is.
I'm not seeing comptroller.
The mayor, the mayor's raising his hand.
Oh, unmute the mayor, please.
I got him.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor. Wait, she muted you again.
306,000.
306,000?
1,300,000.
One, three. Thank you.
Dave had his hand up?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Della.
Okay, so I had two questions. The first one's a simple one. If you look at on page two, where you have active members, payroll is at 5.540294 million. You got 121 active members. The year before, we had 119 active members, which is about 1% less. But yeah, our payroll is, has gone up 8%. That has, that's completely on us, correct? That's, that has nothing to do with, as far as like you guys' end, is that correct?
No. That's based on the data that we received.
Okay. But I just couldn't understand why there was such a drastic increase of 8% on the payroll versus just a 1% increase in number, or two, two extra employees. That's why it just didn't make sense. I didn't know if they had that type of a crazy raise.
Sometimes it can be a matter.
119 to 121. And then you went from 5 million to 5.5 million and then some, with just two employees.
No. Sometimes it can be timing of contracts that, you know, maybe if there was a contract being worked on and the salary increases weren't effective in a, you know, in a prior year, sometimes that'll, that'll have a bearing. But I, otherwise, average, the average pay, the average pay was, yeah, 45,000 versus 42,000 in 2018.
Okay. So it's not that drastic of an increase as far as the average pay, just what you just said. Okay. And then the main question I had is, if you look at how much of it was funded, as we talked about earlier, back in 2001, at one point, this was at 129%, which is obviously great. And then now, it's all the way down to 75%. I mean, we're talking about, you know, a little bit less than half. I'm just wondering, what exactly is it that we as a city are doing wrong? But more importantly, what recommendations do you have as an expert in this particular field to make some corrective action? Because I know a lot of cities aren't a 75 percentile, but I know most ideally, you'd like to get it closer to 80s and even preferably 90s. What actions do we need to do?
A big reason for the decrease in the funded ratio is the increase in liability is attributable to the benefit provision changes. And as John Riley pointed out, sometimes, and when you compound the effect of the various changes, that's, that has more impact than just making, you know, one change. And one thing affects the other. If some, if they are allowed to retire earlier, plus they can purchase. If some, if they are allowed to retire earlier, plus they can purchase service credit, plus they have pay raises that exceed the assumed amount. All of those things affect, affect the liability.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions?
Madam Chair, if I may. So if you, if you look in the budget, I want to go back to councilwoman Clayton's. If you look at budget line 101, 20718, the general government pension contribution amount is 1,306,000 dollars. And that ties to page three of the report, when they took the 1,591,000 and broke it down between general fund and water. And so if you could see those two numbers tie.
Thank you. Any further questions before we move on?
Madam Chair, can I make a comment that our board that we will reconvene at our other, at our general government meeting now? And Sandy, if you're still there, could you come back? Because I have a couple of technical questions regarding the report that I don't know that we need to go through with the city council.
Madam Chair.
Okay, we got Mr. Suher raising his hand. Can somebody please unmute him?
Got it.
Got him.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Can you do it, Georgian?
Yep, I asked him to unmute.
I am.
Oh, there he goes, there he goes.
I have two things I would like to ask Sandy to explain to me in the city council. What is the amortization payment of 788 and 622, $22? What is that portion?
Oh, 780, all right, that's taking the unfunded liability. And that would be like the remaining piece of a mortgage that you have. And then amortizing it, and in your case, is being amortized as over a 22-year period. So that's the amortization payment this year on that unfunded liability. It's like a mortgage payment.
Would it reach zero in 22 years?
Ideally, that's, that's the theory.
Okay. Now, I, I want to ask Sandy or John, what would you recommend to the city council? Should they participate in the negotiation of the contracts with the unions, the employees? Or should they, or should they hire some consultant to advise them, you know, on all these details?
As it relates to the pension, I think what should happen is that the council should have the actuary come in and present the supplementary actuarial valuation report, which shows the cost of the benefit changes that are part of the contract. And so I think, you know, whenever there's a contract that has a benefit change as it relates to pension, that the actuary come in and explain that to the council and how it will affect, you know, current contribution rates and funded rates and all of that. And I think, you know, that's the important part as it relates to the pensions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further questions? At this time, we will move on to the proposed 2020, 2021 TIFF budget. Please unmute them.
All right, Tom, you got to unmute it from your end.
Okay, there we go.
There we go.
You go ahead.
Well, everybody should have a copy of our proposed budget in front of you, I believe. I'll just kind of go through and give you some highlights. Not much has changed and it's the same categories still basically every year. If you start looking at the revenue, for the TIFF revenue, the income capture, going with a number that's pretty much exactly what we collected this year. The thought is there may be some growth next year, but because of the pandemic hitting, we don't want to be counting any chickens before they've hatched. So I thought it'd be best to take a conservative approach towards our revenue. So we just kept it at the actual capture that happened this year. Then we also receive a payment from the court towards the bond. The agreement was they contribute, I believe it's $10 from every ticket or some sort of ticket, some sort of fine that goes towards the building. And that number's been dropping pretty consistently every year. We anticipated 175,000 last year, but it dropped to under 100,000 this year. So that's the number we're going to estimate for next year as the 99,000. So that gives us the total proposed revenue of 2194, 2,194,000. And then going into the expenses, the Justice Center, the principal of the bond that the TIFF covers is anticipated to go up by about $20,000. However, the interest is going down by about 19,000. So pretty much a wash from last year, just kind of switching from category to category there. Then our library bond payment that we contribute, a percentage of the JFK Library Bond, that's just going up slightly this year. So that's pretty much unchanged. The administration fees, the only thing that's going up is because our anticipated revenue is going up. Our agreement with the city from when they established TIFF was six percent of the revenue capture would be given to the city for administrative expenses that they do on our behalf. So that's going up slightly because of the uptick in the estimated revenue from last year. And then going down to the projects, you'll see Westwood Schools, the line item is still the same. Industrial Park improvements, the same. Commercial rehab program, we're still leaving that at the same. Fire station improvements, we have the same. Justice Center improvements, we've gone up, we budgeted 45. They're in the process of looking for a new sign for upfront. The sign upfront is in bad condition, always having to be repaired. So the TIFF board provided in the budget to pay for the cost of a new sign upfront of the Justice Center. Then tree trimming, you know, we do tree trimming project every year, 25,000 through the TIFF district. That's remaining the same. We've added 5,000 into the ordinance officer fund. Sometimes they find it could be helpful to have some additional help. So we provide a little more funds there in case they need to have somebody cover the area. We can help pick up the cost of that. The right-of-way maintenance and repair, we dropped that down a little bit from last year. We had anticipating doing a lot of cleanup projects of properties that we own. Some more than just routine maintenance, tree overgrowth and things like that. We got some of it done this year. We're looking to still do some more next year, but not as much because we already took care of some of it this year. Then continuing on with daily park improvements, we're leaving 10,000 in for that. Van boarding, commercial improvements, we're continuing another 50,000 this year. Should we have projects going that we would need that for? DPW improvements, we put a substantial amount of money in there. We moved that to 100,000. And talking with director Sellme, there's a number of problems. I went down and toured the facility. They have old asbestos tiles that are breaking up. Number of issues in the offices, in the facilities for the employees are in bad shape. So working with him, we'll see what we can do to help improve the facilities there to make a safer and better place for the employees. Next item is the beach daily improvements. We left 10,000 in there. Crime prevention, we left 2,000 there. Library improvements, we went up to 10,000 from the 5,000. They didn't use last year's allotment of 5,000. So we wanted to roll that over into this year for them. They're working on getting a new emergency door for the JFK Library. They've had some trouble with, I guess, finding exactly what they're looking for there. But I'm sure the money will be used towards that project and talking with the director. And then that means our contingency, we lowered that quite a bit. You know, as I mentioned a couple of years ago, it was kind of a new thing for us in the budget to have the contingency at the suggestion of the auditors. We weren't quite sure what level to have it at. So the way the numbers worked out, and we feel comfortable keeping a lower number than we did in the past on the contingency. So that's kind of a synopsis. If anybody has any questions?
Okay, Councilman Constance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Tom, the JFK Library and the DPW headquarters, I'll call it, are both in the TIFF, so they're eligible for, like if we reimburse or pay for, like say, let's say asbestos tile removal, that's 100%?
100%, oh, that we can cover?
Yes, I, no, no, in other words, we, there's no matching, no, if there's a bill for 200,000, we put in 50,000. We can cover that portion 100%. In other words, there's no qualifiers because it's in the TIFF district, correct?
Right, right, those, those are approved projects. See, when the TIFF was established, there was a list of certain things that TIFF can use its funds for. And those are two of the items that TIFF can use its funds for. So like say if the director said, hey, we need to replace the tiles, it costs whatever, I don't know what the cost would save, 50,000. Because I think rather than replace, we could encapsulate, which is probably a better option there. Say it costs 50,000 to encapsulate. We can run it by the board, and if the board approves, the board will cover the whole cost.
But then for something like DPW equipment, we, that probably would not be an allowable expense, correct?
Right, right, this is for the facility itself. We can do improvements to the facility itself.
Or for example, improvements to the Richard Young Center, which is not in the TIFF district.
Well, we can't, we can't do anything for anything outside the district.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have councilman, councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Just two quick questions, hoping you can share with us. The first thing is daily park. I know there was a lighting project that was much needed there. And I know TIFF was instrumental in getting that accomplished, and thank you for that. As well as the sign, has the sign been replaced? And what is in the project for this year, for the budget for the 10,000? And then the other one would be beach daily improvement. I just wanted to see if you could share with us, if you would please.
Well, the, the sign, there was a sign, we had put in two new signs that we had paid for, and one of them was damaged, so we did pay for that to be replaced. That was about a year ago or so. And then we also paid for new, the wood chip, sort of they put under the equipment. We paid for that to be installed. As for this year, we just, we have it in the budget, but we just have it open. I talked with the parks director, told him if he needs anything at all at Daily Park, let me know. We have the money there available for them.
And any update, if you can share, for the beach daily improvement project that you typically do every year? Is there anything you can share with us that we might be able to expect?
Well, this year, we don't have anything especially, specifically lined up. This, the virus thing kind of knocked us off track a little bit on what to do. That's, that money we budget every, we don't necessarily use it every year. Sometimes we do to help with the beautification of each. In the past, we have paid for trees and plants to be put in, some maintenance going on. That we use that too, like if there's some kind of maintenance problem on beach daily, they call us up and there's a problem in the roadway or something, maybe we can help with. When we don't have any other projects lined up, we can have that money available to help cover those things.
All right, thank you, appreciate that, thank you.
We have Jay Spalding, I'm going to unmute you, go ahead, please.
Hi, yeah, name's James Spalding. I'm, I moved here in Dearborn Heights and I was, you know, curious about the budget. And I was hearing you go through everything. I was trying to look up the information as you were going through it. I didn't, I'm not sure if I was looking at the correct details. So a lot of the, a lot of the comments that you made were like deltas, like how much we were increasing or, you know, budgets. So like, what is the total allotted budget for the current, for the police department currently? That's what I was curious as to the, what that currently was at.
Well, if I may, that's actually, you know, this, this is for the Tax Increment Finance Authority, which is, we're an economic development office that works with the city. We have nothing to do with the police department, that's falls under the city budget.
Is that the city council budget meeting? I must be confused because it's not really straightforward, which means...
Yeah, city council had their budget meetings a few weeks ago. We passed the general budget, this is just for the...
Right. I didn't see the notice that went out on that meeting, so I apologize.
No problem, it was over about four or five days.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I'm just looking, I was going to try to look it up to the gentleman to see if it's on our website. Because it should be posted, the approved budget should be posted on the website. So you may be able to find it there. I'm trying to find it now, I thought I could direct you there, sir. But the approved budget would be typically posted on the website. So you'd be able to look up that information if that's helpful.
Okay, he's muted, so. Any other questions or concerns? Councilman Bazey?
Yeah, I was going to recommend for that gentleman, if he provides his email, we can email it.
Thank you. If you want, sir, can you send it to me privately in a message instead of putting it publicly? Because these are shown on YouTube and you don't want to get a bunch of unwanted emails. Thank you. Any other questions? At this time, I'm going to end the study session and we will continue at seven o'clock. At this time, I'm going to end the study session, and we will continue at seven o'clock.